Item number 18 is an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan. Docket number 15-3552, block 645, lot 49, 9-19, 9th Avenue, the Gansburg Market Historic District, a 19th and early 20th century wagon storage building and stables combined and altered in 1921 to 22 as a vernacular-style garage with stores. This is an application to alter the ground floor and construct an addition.
Good morning, Commissioner John Graham with Landmark Staff. It will take us just a moment to set up the log. Good morning, Commissioners. John Graham with Landmark Staff. The application before you is for work at a building at the northwest corner of 9th Avenue and Little West 12th Street. It's shown here under the scaffolding. It is facing the large cobblestone plaza that was formed at the intersection of the Greenwich Village grid and the Manhattan grid when the L was taken down in 1940. Here's a photograph of the south facade of the existing building. There again is the corner view. The applicants are proposing alterations to this two-story building, including installation of new ground floor infill, restoration of cast iron elements at the ground floor, restoration of the masonry cladding, and also the construction of a rooftop addition. And Harry Kendall is here to start your presentation. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. Very bright. Hello, Commissioners. I'm Harry Kendall with BKSK Architects. We're the designer architects for the project. We're here with our client Bobby Carey of Aurora Capital and Peter Wormser, the architect of record. To introduce our presentation then, but I hope is a nice discussion, I'd like to make several observations about, first, the Gansburg Market District in general, and a couple of related observations about the Gansburg Plaza where the building we're focusing on is located. The district is characterized by a variety of styles, of course, heights, and rough conditions that are often involved multiple adaptations. They reflect the ghosts of past uses. The area acquired its, what I call, robust discord with a palpable sense of contrasting conditions quite early, but the imposition of the 1811 Commissioners' Plan as it came together with the less regular Greenwich Village Plan. The meat market overlay added a layer of blood, sweat, and grit, and the areas of modern rebirth is involved in the exciting dialogue of au vol de nouveau. Source of the district's evocative grit, which we often speak when we're examining this area and closing something, came from a specific set of uses. Those uses have changed. So we look to the remaining artifacts, the discolored bricks, the rough Belgian blocks, the attached signs and canopies, that are reflections of past incarnations of the market conditions to retain that spirit. So the square itself, or plaza, the plaza is emblematic of the district character I described, this healthy mix. After we speak, I know many will testify to the plaza's iconic qualities, and we are in heartfelt agreement about the importance of the plaza. Squares emerged, as John mentioned, since the demolition of the L in 1940, in somewhat more modern times than it originally formed. And there are ongoing plans for reconfiguration of its time-honored rough paving. It's characterized by this mix of sort of new old buildings, we call, new storefronts, old canopies, and this trapezoidal geometry perfectly captures the intersection of the grids. That our building on the west side of it can play a role in highlighting that geometry and lend a hand in further defining this great urban outdoor room. As it now stands, 919 9th Avenue is a venerable, decidedly undelicate and imperfect artifact. We aim to retain many aspects of that and reveal hidden aspects of its past history while adding a contemporary top. We don't believe that the view into the block's interior is a positive thing for the square, nor is it of historic or urban importance. We've also found that the partially visible elements, you see these sort of remnants of an earlier incarnation, these are cast iron piers, columns, the only hint of what this building has been. Our design has been directed at both uncovering the fascinating complexity to be found in this seemingly simple two-story corner building and in finding the right scale for the square. So we are proposing to add two visible stories in a conscious partner with our restoration and what we call sort of revelation of the two existing floors below. The floor area of the proposed addition is as of right, with our addition proposed as approximately one-half of that which would be allowable. There's a rear yard aspect that we're going to, the rear yard waiver needed that we're going to BSA for, solvable by either BSA variance or a lot merger. We're sort of pursuing both, but the BSA is the more likely option. But if, even if it proved persistent, it would have no effect on the exterior that we're presenting now. So as I said, we're seeking approximately half of what's allowable FAR with me. So in a brief preview of the points that we'll make, and I'll be followed by Elise Quaysbarth discussing the history, and then George Sheppard Decker describing the details of the building. So, brief preview. The first floor of 919 was originally open, especially on the west 12th side, as market stalls. The second floor, added in the early 1920s, was built above, partially supported by cast iron columns of those market stalls, many of which remain and can be restored. The unique, you know, the unusual and quite unique hovering quality of the second floor is itself of great visual and even historic interest. By adding new set-back floors, inspired by that historic layering, and proportional in its additive approach, the integrity, the character of Gansburg Square can be reinforced without diminishing the integrity of the two-story artifact. That's strategy of contrast, we believe, whereby the addition is clearly separate and distinct from the historic artifact, we feel is appropriate. And we feel that an unusual, which we'll go into great detail, about highly textured artisanal glass screen suspended by visible projecting metal trusses and framed in an irregular staggered pattern can engage in a spirited dialogue with the rough textures of the district. So with that, let's go further into the historic district.
Thank you. Mary.
You press to the right to advance in the... That's a pointer. Good morning, Commissioners. Elise Quaysbarth, Higginson Quaysbarth. I'd like to just summarize four points about the proposal, and then we'll go into the details of the historic building. There are four points that we think kind of carry through the discussion and description today, and one is the development history of the district creates a space for more diversity of scale and design than many historic districts do. And as Harry pointed out, the district designation report talks about buildings of various heights and scales between 1 and 6, and our proposal fits very well within that range. Just would like to point out, this warehouse building, which is a 20th century building, is just up the street, which is very much in keeping with the height, and the Collier building down here, which is early 20th century building, is similar, and you saw the buildings that were around the square on the other side. I won't go back to make that point again. The intervention allows the volume of the original building to read independently. This is a two-story building, but it's got a very large footprint, and the choice of materials and design allow a duality of read, one which is the ground plane, the original building, and then the second piece which helps contain the plaza. The articulation of the facade, I mean, three, begins to draw its texture and scale from elements within the district, most especially the Belgian block field, which is in front of, in front of the building. And finally, the spatial definition of the square can be contained by a larger building, as we note on the other side facing east. So to go to the history of the building itself, we're going to go through this in rather a lot of detail. I'll try to not be tedious, but we're going through this to illustrate the point that the existing building is rather cobbled together over time, and it's a humble example of the district's modified building type, and it was part of the vast astroholdings in the neighborhood, which is not so unusual. The 1859 map is outlined in red to show our site, and shows that the site at that time was comprised of several buildings, both frame and brick, and of different uses. This 1879 photo, which is the earliest one we have of the site, shows the then-new 9th Avenue elevated. This frame building, actually, there are two of them, two frame houses are these right here, and you can see even in this early photo that the adjacent buildings are carved out to make way for stable and wagon use, and we have a horse that's making his way into that. So the site had multiplicity of uses from the very beginning, and the 9th Avenue L, that infrastructure was always part of the condition of this site. This illustration just shows that in the 1880s and well into the 1890s, the individual buildings were being altered to accommodate their new uses. This one is of particular interest because it shows a passage to the yard in the back, which is back here, and this shows that an original door and window were being removed to create a much bigger entry into the building. Same kinds of things were happening throughout. What gets really interesting is that between 1900 and 1905, the site is beginning to be consolidated. So if you look at this floor plan, Little West 12th Street is here, 9th Avenue is here, and all of the buildings that were on the site along Little West 12th Street were taken down to create a one-story market building, and you see the market stalls here. What is also interesting for us is that in the plan, and you can also see it in the elevation, are posts that are supporting elements in the building, and then there were folding, probably glass and wood doors. We believe that the columns that are here are the same cast iron columns that still remain in the building today, and it certainly illustrates that the intention, oops, the intention was to have these spaces opened regularly. I'm sorry, but I think someone may have misaligned this projector. Thank you. Then in 1905, there was a new proposal to add a second story to our one-story market building, and it's possible...
Elise, there's no photographs then of...
No, sadly.
Interesting. You had the house back in 18 whatever, 80 something?
Yes.
And then now you have these drawings, but no photos?
No. The historical record, it was extremely complicated, and I'm fairly certain that we don't have the whole story, but we've pieced it together as best we can. At one point, the DOB record is missing, and we start having photos again. So in any event, the intention was to build a second story and also to expand to the north. So we see that this portion started to take in a couple of the buildings that were here originally, and this one was holdout for a while. These are floor plans just showing that they had a first and second floor. And it's not until 1921, '22 that the building takes on its, mostly its current appearance. And the last holdout building, which was right here, was incorporated into the design. It was converted to a garage building, both on the first floor and the second floor, with stores. Now, the building was fairly well photographed, or frequently photographed, I shouldn't say well photographed, because of the elevated train here, so when they were taking the trestles down, they were taking a lot of pictures. But what we find is that, well, we know from this photo, which you may be able to see better in your package, there was no canopy over the north part of the building. There was a canopy with what appears to be wood coasts that went around the market part of the building. And our historic photos constantly show this in very dark relief, so you can't really see what was going on in there. And then often, there were fruit boxes packed up right in front of the edge of the canopy, so getting a good view of what was going on in there during the 20th centuries is really pretty much impossible. The, again, in your photo, you may see that the historic windows were four-over-fours. We know that from a couple of other photos as well. Our drawings show two-over-twos, but we're proposing to restore the historic condition there. And I'd like to point out that on the north side, or whereas, we have cast iron columns, which I'll show you in a minute, on the Little West 12th Street side, and turning the corner, we believe they're there, on the north end, we have brick piers. So the cobbled-together nature of the building is still in evidence because there's a garage ramp that goes in here up to the second floor, there was a little office here, and another garage entry from the first floor, and then some miscellaneous storefronts which have been altered over time. So our project is trying to work with some of the fragments of what's left from these early days and to work with the historic materials that we found on this side that are different from what we found on this side. We are proposing a canopy that will go over the entire building, which we think is appropriate for this type of building in this district, but it affords the opportunity to detail it differently on the north end to differentiate the two treatments. Now, to talk a little bit about the historic district, because we have a historic building that we need to address, but we also have to talk about why we can do something like this in this historic district. I'm fairly certain that you've seen these photos before in a number of other applications, but in the '30s and '40s, there were a number of buildings that were torn down in the district when their utility was less effective, and this is an illustration of that. This is a 1938 photo looking at Gansburg Street at 9th Avenue. It's a tenement building that had been converted to use of market space on the ground floor and the second floor. It was demolished and was replaced with this purpose-built building in 1940. This is not our site, but it's the typical kind of thing that was happening in the historic district at that time. Another example here of a tenement building that, rather than being fully demolished, was only partially demolished on Washington and Gansburg, because it was really only the lower floors that were really useful to the market uses at that time. So that sort of up-and-down quality, construction, demolition, partial demolition, and new construction caused a historic district that has kind of a, almost a ragtag quality to it, with these sort of later buildings of small scale with other buildings that were partially demolished, next to rather taller buildings, warehouses, refrigeration plants, et cetera. So it gives it a very mixed appearance. Because of that, the historic district proposes or presents a palette for exciting new architecture that I don't know that any of us could have anticipated when we started out. And we think that what's happening in the district is part of a new tradition, and that our proposal is part of that tradition, and I've only illustrated a few projects here, partially because they're really interesting and good projects, and partially to show that in every case with these four buildings, the existing building and the specific context was very, very different. And so the design solutions for each project were different. And, you know, I know that you all have participated in these conversations, but I think it's really wonderful to see. This is a building right on the square, just about 10 years old. That was just a straight-up new building. Diane von Furstenberg project was a complete transformation of a tenement building that had been warehoused above the second floors with her signature addition. These buildings, this is misaddressed. These buildings are just north of our site. They were four early row houses, and their restoration and the scale of the addition were precious and small scale to address the small scale of those existing buildings. And then this building, which is just nearing completion, is a fantastic example of how a new building can work with an existing smaller building to have that duality of read that I was suggesting before of two-story street wall with a new building addressing its context right next to the High Line. Going back to our site specifically, the High Line is on the west side of the district, outside. The elevated train, as we talked about before, went right up 9th Avenue. So this pair of photos really illustrates how historically there was a level of activity at the ground plane, the street level, and that there was also a level of activity up in the air. This building is just a block north of us, and this is really our context, activity on the ground plane and activity up above. And in some cases, there were elements of signage and other architectural features to address what was happening. So our design is actually kind of trying to bring that concept in because the L was so much a part of its historic context. The gritty nature of the early days of the market began to fade a little bit. These photos were taken in the 1950s when there were fewer meatpacking and produce places, and with the High Line being in the district or being just adjacent to the district and retail, there's really a different kind of commerce and activity that's being proposed or that actually exists, and our project is trying to address that. So what's left in the historic district that defines its character and sense of place? There are the Belgian blocks that we've talked about in the plaza. There are brick buildings of varying heights and scale. There are signs that have very heavy armatures that are attached to the buildings through which you see signage and levels of sign between the neon and the painted sign behind, and then the building behind that. These are really character-defining features. You have hardware that attaches to the buildings, the canopies, which are a huge character-defining feature that sort of defines the space at the ground level. Interestingly, there are also fire escapes and views through the canopies from the ground level that give a layering effect of something that's semi-transparent to what's going on behind it. And these are features that our new project has tried to draw on in order to build on the existing historic context. And then, you know, just many more canopies. Most of them were metal historically. We're not so sure that ours was. It may have had panels of woods and photos or just bad roofing material. But we've been seeing new canopies with glazing that bring the metal and glass together and allow light to come into spaces that would really be quite dark, as is illustrated in our historic photos. So we're back to the existing building, and if you look at your handout, we've outlined in red the places where we know that we have existing cast iron columns. This is Pastiche Restaurant is here, we believe, but we haven't been able to probe, but we believe that they would still be in there. If not, we'll be able to get cast iron columns to fill in that space. The interstitial spaces are pretty awful, concrete block and stucco with steel and steel polymetal doors. There's one storefront here of late vintage. And again, existing windows are replacement windows we're proposing to restore the original configuration. So on 9th Avenue, again, the restaurant was put in the late 1990s, covering up a good bit of whatever was there before, and you can see again the different treatment on the north end of the building as it started to be cobbled into the existing conditions. And then to point out that we have here, rather than cast iron, we have brick piers, and we're going to use those in the new proposal. Garage door here, storefront here of early vintage but in terrible condition, open area for garage entry here, and a late-vintage storefront. So you don't have very much to work with. So I think at this point, I'd like to hand it on to George Sheppard Decker so that you can get the details from the new proposal.
Good. Thank you very much, Elise.
So the first thing we wanted to, George Sheppard Decker, BKSK Architect. The first thing we wanted to talk... The first thing we wanted to talk about were the elements of restoration on the Little West 12th Street side. We've talked about the cast iron columns on the first floor that we intend to restore. And the only thing I wanted to mention about that just briefly is that there is this lovely design of its capital that seems to be fairly clear and evident in the incrustation that is there currently. So it has a very delicate quality to it. We want to send, we intend to put a continuous metal and glass storefront in behind that, set free and clear of the cast iron columns so that they can continue to be articulated as a historic element. That's thin-profile metal and steel and glass. At the top portion, we intend to restore the masonry, not to a pristine degree, but to a kind of modeled and incrusted degree because that's the way we find this thing and that's the way it's character and part of what we think is still killing about the building. In certain locations, there are very clear indications of windows that existed because lintels are still there, and we intend to restore and replace those windows. All of the windows are currently replacement aluminum. We want to come back in with wood. After this rendering and after these drawings, we discovered that they were in fact four over four. We intend to replace them as four over four. On the Ninth Avenue side, things become a little bit more complex. As we indicated before, there are two bays that we know that cast iron and the openness of the ground floor continued around to that side. The balance of that facade was always masonry piers, and it's difficult to see exactly what that configuration was in between the piers, but generally it was thought to be and seems consistently open. At the center, it's completely unclear as exactly what transpires there. Our efforts are to take the cast iron rhythm and the pier rhythm, which is relatively consistent, meld them together at the center, creating a new center and a new place for our, the center of our building. So we would combine the pier language at the center with new columns placed here and here of the same proportions as the existing, but clearly very different in terms of their capital and their material. At the very top, again, we are proposing that the windows be treated in a variety of different ways. Existing windows are replaced to be four over four wood. Windows that are in, clearly existed previously and are evidenced by their lintels, for arches, we would replace. The three odd proportioned windows at the end, we would open up in their entirety. And that kind of asymmetry and irregularity on this facade, which seems fairly consistent, is something that we are trying to make sure to preserve. In the center, we have four windows that are essentially new. We want to have a little bit more openness on this floor, and we would like to place them and have them be in proportion to the existing windows on the balance of this facade. And obviously, in a similar way to these windows, we have not located them precisely over the openness, but that is something that happens with the current window placement on Ninth Avenue. Little detail on the parapet, currently clay tile and very irregular, again, no sense of creating a center at any one particular point. We would preserve that irregularity as well. Just make sure my, at this point, and you'll, we'll see it in a little bit more detail further on, we don't intend to have the metal and glass storefront be continuous behind piers. It engages each masonry pier because they tend to have a greater depth to them. We've talked about the nature of the square and the importance of the square. I want to go back in and talk about our addition from the large scale back down to the small scale. And just to reiterate some of the points that were made in the introduction, the importance of Gansport Square to the area, I don't know whether it should be called Gansport Triangle, Gansport Square, it's actually a trapezoid. I mean, it's hard to call it Gansport trapezoid.
They're saying plaza.
Right. But this is an important square in the area. It has a certain flavor and a certain uniqueness to it that has been discussed and talked about for the renovations of the plaza in a previous commission hearing. This is, this is drawing from that presentation of renovation for the plaza with a triangle that was approved at a prior commission hearing. What's interesting about, you know, any good square requires and wants some enclosure and some containment. And the efforts on the restoration or the renovation of this have been to close it at this end with the basque trees, and obviously, it's fairly self-contained at the lower point. At our point, at our site, it sort of cries out to become a player in that whole dialogue and to be a presence in helping to create that square. Interestingly enough, the difference between what is there now and what has been approved is that the square, the triangular portion here, has been even more taken over by a pedestrian occupancy in its center. So that the articulation and the insistence upon it being a, you know, an active pedestrian space has been reinforced so that our site and its prominence become all that more important. One of the things that's important to any good square, any good urban space, is that if you have a site that plays into that urban landscape, certain things may be required of it. And one of the things that we think is important is that the approach to this square from the south and in fact from the east, as the square comes through, city fabric kind of opens up, makes our site of importance in that whole dialogue. So we feel that currently, what we've got is a view that our particular existing building doesn't play especially a great part in because what happens is it leaks over the top to miscellaneous mechanical and backs of buildings. And we think that our addition, which is something that we feel has a certain dynamism and energy to it and a uniqueness to it, starts to be that kind of surprising element that says and signals to someone approaching it from the south and from the east that something else is going on here, that this is a special place of the sort. So the current square, when it's viewed from the center, again, the existing building has a two-story volume, and then above it, it sort of leaks into the backs of other buildings. And as any good outside room, it lacks a certain level of containment or adequate walls along its side. And that our particular addition, which we think is in scale with the area, helps to create and strengthen the presence and the character of that particular urban place. Just in terms of scale, and we have a model here, obviously, and I should be tipping it up a little bit. I hope people will come and take a look at it.
Yeah, George.
I'll tip. Yeah, you gotta hang on to the art vision. Maybe you should, maybe we can just tip it and be careful. I got it. So, you know, in terms of the scale, I think one of the things that's clear in here is the presence and the form of this square as we've been talking about it. In terms of the scale, our thinking is that the model clearly shows that our addition plays well within the scale of the area. And we diagrammed that in a series of drawings here, but I think the model is the thing that shows it the best. There are taller buildings, there are some slightly shorter buildings, but we're a good player here. The scale along the Little West 12th Street side, taller to the west and to the east, and then again, heights from adjoining building playing into the perception of the height from the, of our building from the north, and then obviously, the Gansport Hotel on the other side. We began by talking about how our addition is about recognizing the existing building as a series of additions over time and that our design tries to take as its starting point a kind of balance and proportion relative to the existing architecture. So that the existing building has a very open base for the most part, a very solid masonry second floor, and then we've added on in a way that we think is proportioned to those historical layers that have accreted over time. Simultaneously, as Elise mentioned, we make it clear that ours is different or separated from them with the quote-unquote revealed. It's slightly set back from the brick face, but not set back so far as to not be present, six feet back from the brick face of the building. Then there is a sense that in terms of its quality, and this picture makes it really evident, that with the canopies and with the openness of the first floor, it almost felt as if this single-story brick yoke hovered over the floor below. And our efforts have been to design and use that as a starting point for our addition so that it hovers in a similar sort of way. Simultaneously, the qualities of our addition were something that we worked very hard with, very hard on. And that its primary expression is something that we wanted to be both of our time and of the area. Obviously, glass and its expression and its multiple uses are very much a material that is evidence of our contemporary architecture. Simultaneously, we wanted to take that back and give it a sense of masonry quality to it, of roughness, of quote-unquote grittiness, so that we have and are working with an artisanal glass maker from the west coast, whose name is Joe Berman. And we are using two very different, three very different kinds of glass. There is a transparent glass, the thick cast glass that Harry has in his hand, and a slightly thinner cast glass. And I'll get into that in a little bit more detail here. But again, a quality of a very contemporary material used in a very rough and primitive sort of way.
So which class are those little panels, the vertical panels?
Well, here-
Is that this one or this one?
The long vertical panels, right. These are details of the glass, cast glass screen that we intend to suspend off of the face of our addition as the primary expression of our addition. And these are some quick photographs of the glass in place to make a couple of points. So I'm gonna just work with this model if I can because I think it's the best way to talk about it and just make sure. I think the first thing is, again, the nature of the glass. Now, you can see from the model that it is meant to have two different thicknesses, and the samples show that clearly too. The thickest glass is about two and a half inches. The other glass over here is a three-quarter inch glass. What's not quite clear in this model is the different levels of translucency or sort of obscuringness of the particular glasses, and that will play into how all of this reads as well. So there'll be a graduation from points at which there is transparent glass because there are openings on the fourth floor that want to look out. The thinnest layer, the three-quarter inch rough cast glass, and then the thickest layer, the deeply fissured, more frosted glass. So that plays in and out across the surface.
So which is which? Which? Which of these panels is the thinner and which is the thicker?
Well, you can see it here.
Oh, you can see it actually, indeed.
Yes, exactly.
Or actual sections of the panels.
Yeah, on 39, there is a good section.
Right. And if you take the model and pass it around, you can see that there's an actual expression of that thick and thin glass on it. And so if you get close enough, you can kind of see it fairly clearly. And the distance, maybe it's difficult.
While you're talking about this, could you relate this back to how you see this as an industrial, fitting in in the industrial context of the district, the use of the glass?
I think there's also a very historical quality of the cast glass. It's in fact, one of the earliest expressions of glass period. And then obviously, the support of it and the clips play in very much into the whole industrial aesthetic of attachments that Elise has talked about already. So I think that we are trying to pick up on various aspects of that. Well, that's a good, shining a light.
Oops.
Sorry.
That's okay. Well, and above all, I should just note that our discussion involved the texture of the glass and not be a sleek glass box, anything but, but it be as if it was paved with uneven papers on the facade.
Could you, sorry, before you go on with that, could you do that again? Just talk about that industrial quality of glass again, and the cast glass and the history of cast glass and why that's an industrial, and what's that has to do with disc cast glass? Just try that one again.
Well, I think we started with that notion of proportionality, which I hope is fairly obvious. You know, you have the brick zone that is at an 18-foot dimension, and then the primary expression of our addition is this cast glass screen at a 20-foot dimension. Then we're looking for something that is both contemporary and clearly new and simultaneously very old and of the district. And the older, the historical portion of that sort of building element discussion happens in terms of thinking about the glass as both cast of a kind of primitive artisanal production-level quality. And its suspension off the building, which is almost like a, I mean, Grand Central has that wonderful space in between two layers of glass that one walks along and experiences the separate ways in which that was used to modulate temperature on the inside. The other thing that's critical about the glass is, sorry, is that it be backed up with something that is fairly dark. We experimented on the top of the building with various different colors on the back plane of the glass, which is the weather enclosure of this building, and realized that something dark is what was most expressive in terms of the qualities of the glass and the sort of different transparencies or level of opaqueness, or translucency of the two types of glass. So this is our back painted glass at, behind the screen. And it is a back painted glass so that it also has some reflectance back out through the cast glass screen that we intend to, so the, hopefully, the dynamic between, the dynamic of the sun playing across this at various times of day is going to be quite interesting in various weather conditions.
So it's always back painted or only in certain sections?
So in terms of that, it's never back painted, it just, what the surface that it's viewed against is-
Is an opaque.
When there's a, when there's a transparent strip, it is echoed by a window behind it. When there's not, it's an opaque surface, and that surface is kept somewhat dark.
So that's sort of like a back, and it gives the effect that it's been.
Right. So just to be really clear on that, this is the weather enclosure behind a completely screen that does not function in any, to any degree, as building envelope. And this is transparent at the third floor to allow access to this small balcony. And then up at the fourth floor, there are occasional openings to rooms, and at those points, we have translucent, we have transparent glass. Where there is wall on the inside, there is a back painted glass panel, or right in here. Where there is not wall, there is a door that is transparent. So this, again, up here, is back painted glass. This is back painted glass. This is clear, this is back painted glass. And-
And then there's a windscreen.
And to tie it back to your basic question, industrial character of the neighborhood is something that we are, you know, we feel we're attempting to be inspired by, and that the glass, which is contemporary, is rough and raw and elemental in a way which you could interpret as industrial. The proposed use is not industrial, of course, but the character is a rawness that we think suits the area and a texture and a tiling pattern that is akin to the Belgian block.
Okay, keep going. We're gonna-
I'm sorry. So the other thing to emphasize is obviously the support system for this is, tries to be sculptural in terms of its presence so that it will be detected at times from the exterior along with, along with the, here, glasses. So, examples of the- Examples of the thin, thermally broken steel and glass for the, essentially, the whole weather enclosure that happens at the first floor, street level storefronts. You can now get this thermally broken so it's an effective weather barrier with the same steel profiles of previous generations. This is the glass of our canopy. And that's this glass here. And it's got some qualities of the cast glass, but very, very subdued in terms of slightly obscuring. And I'll talk about the canopies and canopy glass in just a moment. But the attachment of the canopies on the zone where there are cast iron columns is as it was historically. There is a current, an existing C-channel that sat on top of the cast iron columns and accepted the canopy as it went around the building. On the other side, we have the masonry piers. And there, to differentiate and highlight the different conditions, we're attaching it simply through the masonry with a tab to the building so that the canopy sits slightly proud of the building with the only minimal attachment at that point. Same sort of detail locked into the C-channel here, locked into the masonry over on that side. Continual one-foot-five-inch setback of the storefront from the face of the building, engaging the piers on the Ninth Avenue side and sliding behind the cast iron columns for two bays on Ninth Avenue and for the balance of Moon West Park. The canopy itself, in terms of the rhythm of the struts that support the glass, picks up on the cast glass screen above. So the two elements that are different or are attachments to the basic weather enclosure of the building are and have this asymmetrical rhythm to it. The glass between them is the glass I just showed here, and interestingly enough, this sort of plays a middle ground between a more solid canopy, which is probably more emblematic of what was there previously, and a glass canopy of which we all sort of would like to see to bring light down.
It plays in between why? Because it's an opaque?
Because it's a slightly more denser surface treatment.
As the density of struts that hold it up, hold the bearing goods of the glass panels.
It's an opportunity to light our building. So at night, what we're trying to do is light both the brick of the second floor as well as our screen to accentuate that contrast and highlight that difference of materials. And the lighting, the night lighting tradition of the Ganswort Square itself and some of the other buildings in the area, lights placed at these locations on the canopy to shine onto the brick and at these locations on the glass to shine onto the glass screen. At the very top, there is a setback volume that is a rooftop structure. It's a greenhouse structure, again, the thin profiled metal and glass with a solid roof, utilitarian bulkheads here for fire stairs and elevators, a mechanical enclosure at this point, well set back from the edge and similarly at the ends here as well. The other mechanicals are down in the rear yard below here, essentially within this profile. So in terms of visibility, what you see from the south, off of the Uppernish Avenue, Uppernish Street, excuse me, is a little bit of that top of that that we just showed through the transparent windscreen. As you get closer, it disappears from view entirely and views from the other locations where, for the most part, that rooftop structure that I shown is primarily hidden. On the Thirteenth Street side, even though that rooftop structure tops out at about seventeen feet above the roof, very, very minimally visible.
Okay.
This is a commercial building?
Yes, it is.
Oh.
It's all used roof six. It's yet to be leased or, you know, waiting whether it's approved to know how much price one can offer, but it's seen as retail use showroom space.
Any other questions before we go to a fair amount of testimony? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Did you want to turn off the lights?
Maury Schott.
Take that back. Good afternoon. I'm Maury Schott, and in full disclosure, I'm a member of Community Board Two and former member of its Landmarks Committee, now Chair of the Sidewalks Committee. I urge the LPC not to approve the proposed addition to 919 Ninth Avenue in its current form. I agree with community members that this site is crucial to the character of the MPD Historic District. I am most concerned with two aspects of the proposal: the overuse of glass in the additional two floors and the obvious desire to position the rooftop at the fifth-floor level for use as outdoor restaurant and lounge space. Even the design team themselves could not produce a single example of a building in the district that has been approved to use this extent of glass. And the attempt to somehow relate the rough finish of the scrim to that of the district's cobblestones is truly feeble at best. And given the size of the addition, the amount of glass overwhelms the historic nature of the district and plaza. The overuse of glass is further exacerbated by the glass railing that is set so visibly atop the facade. And as the obvious intent of the barrier is to allow the use of the roof space for a restaurant and or bar overlooking the plaza, this will further increase the noise that the area has experienced in the last several years. Basically, this has been designed as a lantern, not as a lantern to highlight the district or the plaza, but a lantern to call attention to itself. And I would hope this level of selfishness in design would be modified by the LPC. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Penny Minz.
Hi, my name is Penny Minz. I'm just a community member. I've lived within spitting distance of this, of the Meatpacking District since nineteen-seventy. I just want to remind this commission that this is a Landmarks Preservation Commission, and this is a landmarked area. I really don't have any problem with the bottom two floors and restoration if, you know, changes it, but I don't have a problem with that. But the increase in, I have two problems. One is the increase in space. It's just, it just seems to me to be a, trying to make use of the popularity of this area as a means for increased rents. The rents in the area are obscene. There's nothing for the community, and, I mean, you know, I can't shop in this community in that area, so, whereas I used to buy things in the Meatpacking District. And, but my real problem with it is that the, a landmark district is not supposed to be a palette for experimentation, and that's what this is. And it has nothing to do with the, with the historic character of the area. It is, it's really ugly. And they could, you know, if it's gonna be approved to give these, this landowner this massive increase in space, it should reflect the characteristics of the area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Laura Klein.
My name is Laura Klein. I've been a resident of the Far West Village for over thirty years, and I've watched sometimes happily and sometimes with a lot of trepidation at the changes that have been occurring in the neighborhood. The problem that I have with this structure that's proposed is that it's too dominant for that space. It's garish, it's harsh and sharp, and what we're losing is the charm of the plaza. It's a showcase for architecture, to my view. And I think that it's very, it, and it will, it's not just the plaza that's affected, but it's exactly as the esteemed gentlemen say, it, every approach that we see this structure from will be impacted, which means the entire neighborhood around the plaza. So please think carefully before approving this. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Zach Weinstein. And then Amanda Davis will be next.
Hello, my name is Zach Weinstein. I'm co-chair of the Greenwich Village Community Task Force. Thank you for this opportunity to testify today. Wanted to make a couple of points. There are, we have a number of concerns about this proposal. The key thing is the size of the proposed addition. The proposed addition is simply way too big. It will completely dominate the existing historic building, which forms its base, and it will overwhelm Ganswort Plaza, which, as everybody has said, is the iconic heart of the historic district. The two-story glass proposed addition is twenty-nine, roughly twenty-nine feet tall. It'll roughly double the size of the existing approximately twenty-eight-foot building, and that's not including the third-floor penthouse that's going to be put into the center of the roof. The applicant has referred several times to the need to contain the plaza. And at the CB2 hearing, they talked about the benefits of this proposal as providing a clean set of walls that would help wall in and contain the plaza. I've lived in this area for twenty-five years. Not once in that time have I heard either a resident or a visitor come to the plaza, look around and say, you know, what this can take, what this plaza needs is to be contained. Quite the opposite. What has historically defined the Ganswort Historic District, and particularly the plaza, is the sense of light and air that it provides. And that light and air is precisely one of the qualities that will be under threat from this application. Second of all, the massive glass curtain is simply historically inappropriate. There is, as, there is simply no other structure anywhere else within the historic district, nor does it really in any way reference any existing structure within the historic district. The applicant has really been unable to show any particular precedent for it. The best argument seems to be that this is a district that is, that is, excuse me, characterized by, quote, "robust discord," and that this is a, quote, "strategy of contrast." That kind of thinking would justify quite literally anything on this site or anything else within the historic district. I don't believe that it is an acceptable rationale for a proposed structure. Third, both the glass curtain and the metal glass treatment of the ground floor are simply too uniform, completely disguising the fact that this building is essentially an assemblage of different buildings that were joined together over a period of time in an ad hoc fashion. The result is a large monolithic structure that, again, is completely out of character with the historic character of the district. Just, again, wanted to point out how important this particular location is. There are other buildings in the district which the commission has allowed interesting, innovative glass structures on top of. All of those other structures are on the periphery of the district. They tend to be on the boundaries facing outwards. I think that this site, at the heart of the district, facing what is arguably perhaps the most historically, one of the most historically significant locations in the city, needs to be treated very differently and treated with a great deal of care. Just as you spent a great deal of time earlier discussing the minor details of signage at Twenty-seventh Avenue in a far, far less sensitive location, I think that what amounts to a half-block-long glass wall illuminated at night needs to be frankly rejected. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Amanda Davis. Martika, sorry about that. Martika Sawen, next, please.
Amanda Davis speaking on behalf of the Greenwich Village Society for Historic Preservation. In reviewing this application, our Preservation Committee finds that the proposed rooftop addition and ground floor alterations are not in keeping with the historic character of this building or the Ganswort Market Historic District. When the district was designated in two thousand and three, GVSHP had advocated for the significance of its low buildings and streetscapes, as well as its different textures. Today's proposal changes the scale and feeling of Ganswort Plaza and is not contextual with the district as a whole. The glass rooftop addition and the glass and metal storefronts feel as if they are overwhelming the historic building. The sleek, monolithic, tall glass ground floor floats continuously behind the cast iron, cast iron columns, creating the experience of a modern, superscaled building at ground level. A new symmetrical entrance at Ninth Avenue adds to this monolithic character, which is unfortunate given the fact that the patchwork of old buildings that make up this facade today is a better reflection of the industrial nature and history of this unique neighborhood. The vertical window slats on the upper floor of the addition feel particularly out of place and do not appear to be relating to any feature in the landmark below. The proposed exterior lighting is also excessive for this prominent location on Ganswort Plaza. We ask that this design be rethought so that it better reflects the neighborhood in which it is located, especially given its prominence on Ganswort Plaza. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Martika Sawen, please. And Ruth Shat, next. Shatree? Shatree, excuse me.
My name is Martika Sawen. I'm a seventeen-year resident of Jane Street, two blocks away from the proposed new building, new addition. What I want to address particularly is the nighttime aspect of the addition. I think there's a lesson to be learned from the New Schools new building at the corner of Fifth Avenue and Fourteenth Street. No matter what you think of it in the daytime, lit up at night, it becomes a nightmare, disorienting to pedestrian and vehicular traffic. I think it's important, since this is the area we're talking about, is a nighttime area primarily, busy enough in the daytime, but its life is really at night. We have to consider what this glass ice cube on top of the building does to the area. Now, I have the Whitney Museum, upper three floors of the new Whitney Building are lit up very brightly at night, and they shine, they light up my whole living room. Now, I can pull the shades, so it doesn't matter. Adam Weinberg says that the future lights on the Whitney will be a soft diffuse light on the exterior, so we'll see. In any case, I think that none of the images that were shown really give any sense of the effect of this large glass block at nighttime. What kind, how does this crinkled glass, what kind of reflection is it going to be picking up from all the surrounding buildings? What is, what sort of a change in the lighting of the whole area will it, will it bring about? I don't know what, what the ideal material would be for this proposed two-story addition. I think the best thing would be not to have it at all. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Is it Rita or Ruth?
Rita.
Rita, okay. Thank you. And then Amita Rodman, next.
Hi, my name is Rita Shatree, and I'm part of the West Village Alliance. I've come here to reiterate many of the things that have already been said this morning. For me in particular, the structure and the design are three layers of a disoriented layer cake. The ground floor obliterates the historical design and concept of the district and the building itself. The top two floors double the existing space and really don't harmonize with the area, creating this monolithic structure that's very out of context and very out of place. I would hope that the particular location of this building would engender more do, more care and more reflection on its context and on its importance to the plaza and to the district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Amita Rodman. And Elaine Young, next.
Thank you. I'm Vice President of sixty-one Jane Street, representing two hundred and sixty-five units, of which we have about two hundred and forty-two owners. So that's the demographics of that. I must compliment the proposers on an extremely creative project and beautiful materials, but tell you that it's inappropriate for this location. The centrality of this location is what is at issue for many of us. I believe it carries a much heavier responsibility to the district than most of the other sites. And of course, that's why a jewel box made sense on paper or in Maka. However, when you are looking at this area either from the south or from the High Line, what strikes us is that we see the glass and steel elements peripheral to what I call the landmarked area. And there's a wonderful dialogue that happens between this peripheral growth that's happened in the last ten years and what's- in the last 10 years and what's in the center. It's the interplay of the unique and the old against the contemporary that we would like to see preserved. As soon as we introduce such ultra-modern, contemporary sensibilities right in the heart of the MPD, and particularly in the center of it, we undo a very handsome dialogue and this interplay. And I believe we actually reduce two areas: the uniqueness of the periphery and the uniqueness of the MPD. And I would propose to you, we might even be cheapening both, literally and figuratively. Worst of all, we introduce homogeneity, which is actually one of the proponents' statements about introducing this new look in the center. But when you look at it as a horizontal west-east viewed from the south, suddenly we have all this glass that we currently see up and out here being brought at the center, and I believe it's going to obliterate what is visually extremely pleasing right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine Young. Then Rod Garcia.
I was one of the people who helped get this area landmarked in 2003, and when I saw this addition, I nearly cried. This, the Meatpacking District is a variety of a lot of styles. I will be the first to admit that. But there is nothing like this style. And when you think of, you're walking up Greenwich Street, going north toward the Meatpacking District, the first thing you see in a long view is, well, now we still call it the Pastis Building, but you see the red canvas, the red awnings of the Pastis Building. This building with the glass cube on top will be what we see in the future if you approve this. And it certainly does not speak of a historic landmark Meatpacking District. I hope, I endorse what all of my neighbors and friends have said previous. I'm not going to repeat them. But you really have to give this a very, very, very careful, careful amount of thought. This is a big, beautiful, sprawling square, and just be careful what you put on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rod Garcia. And then Joe Mensch.
Thank you for having me today. I've been a resident of the West Village for almost 15 years now, and I've seen great change in the neighborhood, and I'm a huge proponent of the addition of this amazing architectural piece. I work in real estate, in residential real estate, so I'm an ambassador to the community, to the West Village, and I bring a lot of clients in the neighborhood. And the one thing that they always ask me about is the Meatpacking District. And looking at the Meatpacking District, there has been, of course, very historical part in our city, and with other buildings such as the Gansport, I think it brings a great mix to the community. I live currently on 95 Horatio, been there for almost 10 years. Overlooking the top floor, I look facing north of the center of Meatpacking, and I'm all for any type of enhancement to this district. And I highly advise for anything that's going to bring repair and restoration to the area. I highly feel that we should definitely look into the expansion of this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joe Mensch. Chris Terrio, next.
Hi, I'm Joe Mensch. I live at 38 Greenwich Street, literally right across the street from this proposed site. It's in direct view of my sole living room window. I'd like to echo what most people have said here about how this glass structure actually blocks all the charm that we see above that Pastis Building from the southern approach. I agree with Zach that I've never heard anyone argue that it needs to be contained in any way. But I'd also like to speak to the tone that will be so severely altered by this addition. I mean, we've long since given up trying to do anything about the nighttime scene in this area. I mean, the outpouring of people from the Gansport Hotel and the place next door, I think it's called Bagatelle. Sometimes I can't even get home at night. But I'm willing to sacrifice that because, at the very least, in the morning and during the day, there's a certain tranquility to the Meatpacking Square. And if you put this Bloomingdale's right on top of the Pastis Building, what you're essentially doing is you're inviting the nighttime scene during the day as well. And I would speak out against anything that would cause that. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Chris? Is it Terrio? I'm not sure I'm reading it correctly. Cynthia Penny, next, please.
Hi, thanks for letting me testify. I live on Horatio Street.
State your name for the record.
Chris Terrio. I live on Horatio Street in the neighborhood. I'd like to speak about the southern approach, as other people have, which is to say that I walk my dog every day in that neighborhood. I walk, see this building every day of my life. And when you're approaching from the south up Greenwich Street, I think of that view as one of the great urban transitions in New York, that you have this rectilinear experience of the West Village, and suddenly it all opens up, and then there's a valley, and then the vertical starts again after that. I think that that's, it's something that would be immediately lost. And you could sort of cleverly Vodroshop it so that the blue looks like the same blue of the sky behind it, but you can't make an elephant invisible. And that's what I think this addition on top of the building is. I'd also like to speak to, you know, the word gritty was used a lot today, and to me, this neighborhood is more than generic grit. It's, you know, my grandfather worked for 40 years as a Teamster, six blocks from this site, and I think that when the commission decided to landmark this district by preserving the architecture, you're also preserving a very specific history of working people in this neighborhood. Like, you weren't, I don't think what we were endorsing was generic grit, theme park grit. And so I think that we need to think really carefully about the specific context of this building and about the specific vertical experience of it. In order to have robust discord, you need dis as well as chord. And to me, the vertical nature of what this building is and the unique signature that it gives the neighborhood is primary. And so I would urge the committee to hopefully not approve anything at all, or if anything, to ask the applicants to rethink it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Penny. Is this a good level?
Sure.
I'm a longtime resident of Jane Street. I was born in the Village. This glass is not an exciting new tradition, as suggested in the presentation. Like Jackson Square, it's an obliteration of an historic district. With this design, the glass above and the huge, long, similar space on the existing ground floor, it's basically an invitation to a noisy night restaurant terrace atop a big-box store. Two things this neighborhood fights always tooth and nail: we don't want them, we don't need them. We were thinking that landmarking would protect us from such a proposal. It's out of scale, it's out of character. Proposals like this are going to turn Gansport Plaza into a suburban shopping mall. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other testimony? People have signed up. Okay, then, "Community Board Two recommends denial of the application, chiefly," I'm reading from it, "chiefly because of the harm it does to this iconic building and plaza." Okay, any comment, response on what's been said in the testimony?
Yes, I think that, to start with, the district is made up of some buildings that have architectural quality and some buildings that embody the work that used to go on here. And our existing building is one of those buildings. I do think that this kind of historic district, whose sense of place is based on a multiplicity of structure types, many of which were partially demolished and cobbled together, is a place where the Landmarks Commission can experiment with new ideas. And I think that the commission has experimented with new ideas in this district really successfully. And we certainly hope that we have the opportunity to participate in that discussion going forward. Secondly, with regard to the scale of the design, we think that in this particular place, through this particular building, which has a large footprint and a big space, that there is the opportunity to build something that has some boldness to it. I think it would be really unfortunate for us to take a timid approach in this case. So, I think that that's all I have to say. I don't know, Harry, if you have anything else to say.
Okay.
Harry Kendall again with Big S K Architects. I wanted to address, in sort of the totality of the comments, that the glass upper stories are highly inappropriate. And one of the speakers said, "This is the wrong place for experimentation." I want to emphasize that this is not experimentation. This is a carefully studied, you know, facade in which we've taken a great deal of care. And that if you look, we didn't insult the passion of the local residents by bringing in a number of European squares that mix glass architecture and masonry architecture in a very bold, but yet exciting and ultimately appropriate way. But there are many of them, and we see this as a plaza that is of world-class, and we feel like we've taken the care to deliver that cognizance of that, and hope you see it that way, too. And we also want to address the question of use, which was, people are concerned that we're...
Roofed up, just to be clear. There is no nightclub, no restaurant designated for the roof at all, and the applicant's willing to commit to that ancillary to another commercial-type use.
Okay. Discussion. Marjorie, please.
Yeah, thanks very much for a very interesting presentation. So, the first part of it for me is the sort of the precedent that we've been working with in this district when we see one- and two-story market buildings. We, I think, kind of consistently come to the conclusion that the intention of the district is not to prevent additions that are quite visible on these one- and two-story market buildings, hence the approval of that project by Morris Ajmi, that's significantly taller than the base. But the issue is always, what elements are you drawing from that persuades us that it is something that is consistent with the character of the historic district and sort of reminds the passerby that this is a historic district and that elements have to be carefully chosen if there's an addition to be made to the building? So, kind of working on that basic model, kind of my first reactions to this are, and this is always a theme that we talk about in lots of districts, in particular this district, is to not spiff the district up, to let it be, we keep using the word gritty, but there's a lot of other things about it. The district has enormous texture, and the texture isn't about sort of similarity and continuity. The texture is about huge variety in materials, some of which are worn, and there's infill, and there's windows of all different sizes and all of that stuff. And the idea is to not regularize and clean up. So, my first kind of reaction to this is that despite all of the studies that have been made, I see the first effort is on that, kind of really, the one story that's remaining of the existing building, it's been regularized and cleaned up. So, you know, for instance, if you had told me that you're going to maintain the base in all of its sort of messy glory and then add something that's, you know, sort of otherworldly to the top, I'd be kind of more persuaded that this is a way of really respecting and preserving the lower levels, and then let's see what happens on the upper floor. But what I feel like is, yes, it's kind of true that the second floor floats above the first floor in the existing building, because in the old photographs, the canopy cast a shadow such that it obscured whatever was holding up the second floor. However, it doesn't actually float. If anything, the shadow is heavy, and the canopy makes it heavy, and so you really read it as a mass. And so, from the first perspective, what I think this is doing is it's taking that second floor and it's really floating it without legs, without any attachment to the ground, and I think that's a mistake. I don't think the building can handle that much sort of violence in a certain way. I think, so removing so much masonry and replacing it with so much glass, and then using a glass canopy is what's floating it. If you want to keep it grounded, then the canopy really needs to be opaque. And I know that there are some examples of glass canopies that we've approved in the district, but they had sort of a different purpose, or they were in a different kind of a context, or the building had much more substance going on upstairs, above. So, that's my first reaction. And so the regularization of the windows I find really problematic because it's kind of making the building look plain. And then I'm really struggling to have, make my own story about the glass, because I wasn't persuaded by the architect's story about the glass. But I just don't see how the glass is drawing from an indigenous material or an indigenous typology or something. And I keep going back to Morris Ajmi's building, where the relationship between the High Line and bridges and all of the sort of the structures that were, that are prominent, predominant in the area, were incorporated into the design of the building. And I keep looking for, like, where is there the glass that you get to pull from? So, the material just isn't working with me. The other thing is that this is a two-story structure where you absolutely cannot find the second floor. So, I don't see actual precedent for not revealing each story of the structure. And so the only way that I could be persuaded that you don't reveal the two stories is that that structure on top is an obje, you know? We sometimes have those, where there's some, like the Von Furstenberg, for example, was a sculpture on top. So, if this were a sculpture, but I don't see it as a sculpture, it's quite, it's a rectangular box with very beautiful detailing and very beautiful materials, but I'm not finding the narrative that gets me there.
Okay, done? Marjorie? Okay. Michael?
I agree with a lot of what Marjorie said. I think that the first thing is, is that this, I think this district, as this commission has approached it in the past, is different from other districts in that its variety and its history can allow for a greater degree of variety in additions, and it can allow for visible additions that are visibly of their time. So, I think that, I think that the notion of a major addition that basically significantly increases the size of the building is one that I could find appropriate. I agree also with Marjorie's general feeling about the base of the building, to the extent that I would suggest that the applicants try to go back and look to do a bit less. I think that the, what we're doing here is we're taking an old gritty building that had many industrial and commercial uses, and we're turning it into a much higher-end, fancy thing. And to the extent that we are suggesting preserving or maintaining grit, quote-unquote, we're, it's all kind of, you know, it's, we're holding on to the physical manifestations of a period while having let its kind of commercial or social aspects go. And that's kind of sad and hard, and it lends this an aspect of arbitrariness that's hard to work with. But that said, I mean, it is the artifacts that we're preserving. It's not the social construct, it's not, you know, the socioeconomic qualities of the neighborhood. So, given that, and that that's our job, is, I think that trying to do less on the second story of the building would be a good idea. And I think, for me, on the first floor, the... And I think, for me, on the first floor, the notion of restoring the stalls along Little West Twelfth Street and the openness there, I think would be acceptable to me. But I think that the elimination of the, or the suppression of the variety along Ninth Avenue is a mistake. And I think that that can be dialed back by either reducing the amount of canopy, reducing the amount of modification, resisting the urge to extend the typology along Ninth Avenue from around the corner. All could be considered to emphasize the incremental quality of the building. In terms of the addition itself, lastly, I would just say that you might explore doing less to the actual brick itself. I mean, right now, it's got multiple layers of paint. You know, we've seen cases where we leave old paint and let it go, you know? Let it be the palimpsest that it is, let it be a mess, it's okay. In terms of the addition itself, I think that a lot, that, a lot of, for me, my concern about it, and I think it's a really beautiful, thoughtful, creative thing as an object, but in terms of its appropriateness to the district, I think that, I share, I share Marjorie's concern about why the glass as the dominant material. I think that the analysis, for me, suggested that it's the underlying structure that's the more relevant tie-in for the screen, that it's the metal armature, the mechanics of that screen that are, for me, more relevant, more tied into the district and its quality than the glass that is pinned to the front of it. And while I think it's totally cool, I do have a tad of a worry that it's going to look like hell in a couple of years after the dirt gets on it, and you're going to have to have people climbing into that interstitial space with double-sided squeegees to clean this whole thing. I guess that's, that's their problem, and they'll take care of it. But I think that the idea of using glass as the primary textural element, it is a little bit out of left field, and for me feels somewhat alien. And I would suggest they explore using the underlying structure, which I think is its main charm, to foreground that. I think Marjorie's comment about, and we'll go back to the base for a second, about the canopy is completely correct. And the notion of making it glass harms the connection of the canopy as a restorative gesture, as a district-specific gesture significantly, and they should explore making it opaque or significantly reducing the amount of glass. Another aspect of this, and when I kind of squint at the parti, you have glass, solid, reveal, solid. And the use of the rocky-faced glass is meant to suggest a more material, more weighty material. And part of that kind of parti concept, and the reason that I think that it's an interesting approach, and it can work, is the equivalence that develops between the second floor and the fourth floor. And I think proportionally, the fact that the fourth floor is a tad heavier looks to me to make the whole thing feel overly heavy, overly weighty. I would suggest that the applicant look at taking the floor-to-floor heights and reducing them so that this fourth-floor addition could float lighter upon its base. Lastly, I think that the screen wall at the top is way too tall and should come down, and that the amount of lighting is unnecessary and could be significantly reduced.
Fred? Thank you. Michael?
I thought the presentation was, as always from this firm, at a very high level of ingenuity and creativity. And I thought the level of testimony that I heard was maybe the best I've heard in five and a half years or whatever on this commission. I really thought it was eloquent and elegant. And I learned from it, as well as from the, from the architect's submission. I think in a nutshell, I, I'm not in a dissimilar place from my two colleagues who've already spoken. The ingenuity, which I really was appreciating and linking into and thinking was wonderful in many ways, I simply never could connect that ingenuity with the appropriateness of being right here at this, at this location in this district. Although this district, I think, we all understand to be one that allows perhaps a little more robust, out-of-context even, character. But nonetheless, I was struggling, as these two, two people who spoke before me. I was struck by the term hovering, that the glass hovers over the, over the brick base. And I thought that was very clever at first. And then I started to look more closely at why and what was hovering, and then how the brick was made now to hover over the glassy base below. And I think maybe that's, it's too glassy, and the brick is just suspended in midair, and maybe that's an inappropriate way to deal with that. And then the hovering of the big ice cube, as it was called, is, you know, when you start looking at the proportions of the whole ensemble, I think it falls apart. The proportions are not working somehow or other. Does that mean it's too high? It might, from a proportional point of view, from this building and a proportional point of view. Is it too high for the neighborhood and the district? I don't really think so. So I don't know how the applicant will resolve that, if they think that's an important thing to resolve. The comment of do less, I think Michael Goldblum's comment, I agree with wholeheartedly. I think there's just too much rationalization, too much homogenation of the existing building. Leave it alone a little bit, let the evolution of time and dirt and grit, some of it stay there. I think that's a good, that's a good direction. And finally, I just, you know, as clever as this glass is, as gorgeous as it is, as clever as it is to relate it to masonry in the neighborhood, including the cobble, it's, yeah, you need, you need that constant message to be told to you, because you can't really see it, I'm afraid. You don't get it visually unless you're told. So I'm beginning to wonder whether the glass itself is the wrong material there. If there's to be an addition, and I think there can, of at least one, maybe two, is it three, I'm not sure, but should it be expressed with glass, even a non-slit glass? I'm beginning to question that, and maybe thinking that on pages sixteen and seventeen in the handout, there are endless images of not glass but steel. And I'm beginning to think, isn't there maybe more tie-in there? Anyway, that's enough.
Okay. Joan?
Yeah. I agree with a lot of the comments that have been made, and I'll try not to repeat any of them, except just to say that I really do believe that the first floor has too much brick taken out, and I feel like something is just tottering on high heels, and, you know, that hasn't learned to walk on them quite yet, or something. It's just so, you know, it's just leaving the building without a base. And I think the building really does need a base, and it needs to be, to help it be consistent with the character of the area. And I think that we have tried new ideas here in this area, and there is a place for new ideas, but we've had very good reasons for all the new ideas that we've tried, sort of a sculpture, or relating to the bridge and the high line, and things like that. So again, I won't repeat everything that's been said. And I think that, as Fred said, I think that this design is absolutely beautiful, but it's just not for this district. And I think for this district, it's really, the glass is forced, and you're trying to, too hard to create something different. And I think that what happened, something that should be a very elegant piece on the top, is too heavy. And the glass itself is, in my, it feels heavier to me when I look at this than even brick or stone. It is just so heavy. So, and I think that the canopy I could deal with if there was a more solid base. So I think it just needs to be relooked, you know, reworked for this district.
Yeah. Libby, please.
A couple of comments. I'm in the same camp as most of the commissioners. I think that in the end, the original building is starting to feel very much like a fragment, based on what else has happened here. In the base, I feel like the uniformity of the openings and the fact that the canopy goes all the way around removes all the sense of random changes and disorganization that we see in this district. I think the size of the addition is too close to the original building's size, and so despite the reveal, it's not looking like it's something added. And then lastly, the glass system feels like decoration, not like it's a real useful part of the building. And I think in this district especially, that sort of usefulness of all the components is important.
Okay. Well, I thought that the use of glass was very interesting, as other commissioners did, and attractive in many ways, but the way it's presented currently is not working for the district. I think number one problem is actually the rendering did not do justice to the intent, because you really can't see the texture and diversity and so forth in the rendering. It just looks like a glass wall. So, but leaving that aside, because it's not just the rendering that is the issue. To start with, just start with the bottom. I agree with the comments of other commissioners that it's much too regular, and therefore it does not seem to be as contextual as it should be for the district. I think you can use glass, steel, reveal the columns, and you just need to create more of the kind of irregular sense of the original building and other, and other locations in the district that would be similar. And I agree with the canopy that also, I mean, I think maybe a metal canopy or something, again, much more reflecting what you would see in this district would be more appropriate. I don't think that the size of the addition is the problem. Have to see what comes back, but I don't think that's the issue. And I think that you could use the glass, the rough-y glass as a material, but it would need to have maybe some metal panels with it, or something that really has a sense, even, that is much more, just having glass pretty exclusively, even with a backing and so forth, just isn't working for the district. It needs to have more, could use masonry, but I think metal would be better, as either panels or framing, whatever, that really would bring it to be much more contextual and more responsive to the sense that we're looking for in this district. And unfortunately for this particular site, this type of top just isn't working without more irregularity and more sense of, as I said, having, breaking up this, using the glass more as though it were fenestration, even with its roughness or whatever, or using the glass as the, you know, framing and the, and metal is like, looking like windows or something. You need, you just need more breakup of this, of this space in a way that is more of the upper story, in a way that is more responsive to the district.
Chris?
A very creative presentation. I agree with what's really been said, probably mostly with Michael Goldblum's do less. I think it's fascinating history with the first two floors here. The glass, people may not know it, but the first facility built on Gansward, other than a farm, was the White Fort. And I thought, Revolutionary War fort. And when he brought the glass up, I said, "Oh, that's it." But I never heard the White Fort mentioned. And it could be granite, it could be anything.
It's in the record.
Yeah. But I just think it's, 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 whatever is on, becomes the third floor, I think should, needs to be much reduced.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all, people in this room, at this table, and across the way, the applicants. This is, I think the nature of this discussion proves that the importance, A, of the district, and B, of what a commissioner at the time of, we, that this district was designated, a commissioner who's not here, but I may see him tonight, Richard Alcott, said, "This is the only true piazza in the city of New York, and therefore it's a critically important location." And I think everyone, I think that the degree of concern and the complexity of the arguments and discussion speaks to that. And I think there's plenty to think about, and the applicants will do it, will do it with you, and then rethink based on all the issues that have been raised here. And at that point, take another step, but not do anything today, and close the hearing with a motion and a second, without objection. Thank you.